Welcome everyone to today's Town of Chatham zoning more of appeals meeting. The date is October 28, 2021. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled non-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let us know. This meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely in accordance with section 20 of chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the following phone number: 1-508-945-4410. Then you have to punch in the ID number, which is 808-187-109, and then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue/hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. So first of all, we need to have a roll call of all members to authorize this form of meeting. Please give your full name and whether you say yes or no. Start with Buck.
James M. Upson, yes.
Yeah.
William Grau, yes.
Paul C. Semple, yes.
David S. Nixon, yes.
David R. Thompson, yes.
Randy J. Potash, yes.
David H. Feets, yes.
Okay, thank you. I should say that any citizens and onboard members participating in the call via the phone, we need to have your name, please, and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. As in the past, and it will be the same today with the exception of the first item that we have, the hearing notice will be read. It will be read by the lady to my right. Is that sort of like flying saucer stuff? Well, anyway. Sarah Clark. Sarah is the Town of Chatham's PPO, that's Principal Permitting Officer. Following her reading of it, then we'll have a presentation, and following that, anybody who was in favor will be asked to speak if they wish. Then I'd read any of our all correspondence. Then I'd ask for anybody who would like to speak against the appeal, has a specific question to do so. To do these things, you've got to be recognized, and if you raise your hand or you hit the little "I want to speak" button, then Sarah can recognize you through the screen. When we're done with that, there could be some rebuttal, but board members then will be asked if they wish to ask questions of anyone present. Following that, we would then close the hearing. We'd go into deliberation, and following the deliberations, we would have a vote. And come with the Massachusetts, it means a supermajority. In our case, there are five votes, so you need to get four to be successful. I don't think there's anything else I need to mention, except to begin with, we need to have a motion on the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes as published.
David seconds.
Okay, so voting today, we have Buck, Paul, myself, two Davs. All those in favor? That's a unanimous vote. Maybe I should have done that by roll call, but I think that's well enough. What do you think? Okay, so our first thing today will be introduced by our Director of Community Development, and that would be Katie Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. You may be aware that the Planning Board has recently been working on some, a draft bylaw, draft zoning bylaw for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And today with me is the, from the Cape Cod Commission, will be Chloe Schaefer and Sarah Kordjeff, who will give an overview of the zoning that the Planning Board has been working on. Also joining us today is Vice Chair Art Spru, and I believe the Chair of the Planning Board, Catherine Helbin, will be joining us as well, if she's not already on the call. So today, the Cape Cod, as I said, the Cape Cod Commission will give an overview of the proposed bylaw. We'll walk through just, you know, the little bit of the background, the process, and then give an overview. We have, in your packets for next week, we have included the draft proposal for your review, and we plan to be back at your meeting next week to answer any questions. We're certainly happy to answer questions today, but we thought giving an overview and then coming back for questions may be beneficial. So with that, I will ask if Chloe Schaefer and Sarah Kordjeff would join me, and Chloe will be sharing her screen to give the presentation.
Great, thank you, Katie. Thank you all for having us. My name is Chloe Schaefer. I'm here with my colleague Sarah Kordjeff, and I am probably going to share my screen in this presentation. So as Katie mentioned, we're going to walk through a little bit of the project background, how we got here today, and then I will hand it over to Sarah to walk through the elements of the draft zoning. So just to familiarize everyone, this is the general study area we have been looking at as we've been, this is seeing the town in drafting some potential new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, looking from just west of George Rider Road along Route 28 to just east of Barn Hill Road. Final boundary is subject to change for any zoning, but this is where we've been focusing our attention as we've been working through this project. And the roots of this really go back to the Route 28 Visioning Project that was conducted over the course of 2012 to 2014 and recommendations coming out of that. And following that project, there were Neighborhood Center meetings to further hear from the community what they like to see in these different Neighborhood Centers. In 2016, the town meeting did adopt new zoning or zoning amendments for the South Chatham area. And then in 2019 and 2020, the Planning Board really turned back to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and considering draft zoning for that area, potential new zoning for that area. In the fall of 2020, we did conduct a public survey and community forum to help understand what people wanted to see in this area, and then produced an initial draft of potential zoning in 2021. I'm going to very, very briefly go over this concept of form-based codes. This is a slightly different zoning approach and one that the Planning Board is interested in incorporating into this potential new zoning in the West Chatham area. So just very briefly, some of the general principles of form-based codes are that, first, it's rooted in public input and public process, making sure what the public would like to see is reflected in the zoning. It's really calibrated to the local context, taking into consideration the local area and its attributes. It's positive, looking to identify what, again, the community would like to see in the area, and not quite as focused on what is not allowed, but trying to provide what they would like to see. And then, of course, as the name would suggest, is form over function, focusing more on regulating the form of development and the public realm really, and a little bit less so on the actual uses or what happens within the buildings. And there are several different approaches to looking at incorporating form-based code into zoning ordinances in municipalities, and one is kind of more minor adjustment in terms of reforming existing zoning ordinances with slight tweaks such as perhaps incorporating a maximum setback into the existing zoning. In the middle ground is a partial form-based code. This might be where a municipality decides to develop a form-based code but only for a small area of town, or a hybrid approach, which is incorporating form-based code elements into that existing zoning that they already have in place. That's kind of more along the lines of where this West Chatham zoning is, kind of between these two. But then on the other end of the spectrum, there is a full form-based code. Some communities do redo all of their zoning with a form-based code. Again, that was extremely high-level and brief, but just a little bit of background there, because you'll see some of those elements within the draft zoning. But I will mention that there's a framework for form-based codes available on our website here that does provide more of an introduction and overview to this concept if you're interested. And then I also wanted to touch briefly on the public preference survey that was conducted last fall, which really laid the groundwork for much of the elements of the zoning that Sarah will touch on, and asked questions about the site layout, where buildings and development would be located, the scale of buildings within the area, a little bit about the style as well, understanding what people would find most desirable and appropriate in the Neighborhood Center, asking what they'd like to see happening within the yards, and then about the uses. And just a few examples of some of the questions here, these ones were related to scale. We did ask, for example, what building heights people thought were most appropriate or desirable in this area, and the total responses are at the top, and then below are responses of residents and business owners in the West Chatham area. But here you can see, most people found two stories, one and a half up to two stories could be appropriate, fewer two and a half stories. Similarly, looking at kind of building widths, facade widths. Most people supported 25 to 50 feet, as well as over half, up to 75 feet, noting that could be appropriate as well. And just one last example, roof forms, definitely an overwhelming, overwhelming support more so for pitched roofs than flat roofs. So just a few examples of some of the questions, but wanted to give you kind of an idea of what's been helping to guide the draft zoning. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sarah.
All right, great, thank you very much. I'm Sarah Kordjeff. I'm the Preservation Specialist and on the planning staff at the Cape Cod Commission, and I'm going to walk you through the draft zoning itself. We'll go kind of quickly because we don't want to take too much of your time, but we recognize that there are a lot of different elements, and that's really why we're presenting an overview for you today. You'll have a chance to look at the document, and then we'll be prepared to answer any questions and help gather comments from you next week. So I want to just remind you that part of the reason we're here is because the Planning Board is very interested in receiving comment, both from the relevant town boards who get very involved in design review and just develop, project development in Chatham, but also we're looking for comments from the general public. And the purpose really helps to set the scene for this because it shows that really what we're looking for with this draft zoning is to preserve and enhance the existing character of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and the desired character of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and that really looks to design issues, in particular, trying to preserve historic buildings, trying to promote the development of infill buildings that are consistent with that character, and really aiming to create a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that also will allow diverse housing types. Go ahead, Chloe, to the next. So in terms of administration, this proposed zoning would apply to all the different development and redevelopment that occurs in the area. And I'm going to walk through a bunch of all these different elements of the location, the procedures, and the definitions as we go. So go ahead on to the next slide. So this will follow the existing development review framework that the town has. This overlay, or this, I'm sorry, this proposed zoning would be guidance for the Planning Board. It would not affect the fact that in this area, the HBDC, Historic Business District Commission, would still have review authority, and certainly the Zoning Board of Appeals would still have their same review authority. It does, however, include a few special provisions that would help existing developments to come closer to meeting the guidelines and the design goals of the district, such as allowing administrative review for some existing buildings that are proposing a very small expansion up to 200 square feet, and also identifying the ability for pre-existing non-conforming buildings to alter or expand up to 1,000 square feet, as long as they take a step towards becoming more consistent with the desired goals of this new district, such as adding a new frontage building, increasing landscape buffer, or removing an extra access point onto Route 28. Go ahead, Chloe. So there are a number of definitions in the draft zoning, looking at primary building, primary building facade, fronted building, frontage occupancy, and lot frontage occupancy. I'll get into each of those in more detail as we get to that section of the bylaw, but just so you know, they are spelled out, and one of the benefits of using form-based code is there's the ability to include a lot more graphics in the draft zoning or in the zoning as a whole, and we hope that that will make it a lot easier for people to understand all the details. So one of the key aspects of this proposed zoning is that it divides the West Chatham Neighborhood Center into three different areas. The first is Zone A1, which is the kind of blue zone that follows the Route 28 frontage. So it's all the areas within 100 feet of the Route 28 right-of-way. And the reason that area is called out is because the character of the neighborhood along Route 28 is really one of the most important elements of this zoning district. So the A2 zone, which is kind of a blue-green color, that is essentially the rear portion of all those lots that are fronting on 28, any area that's greater than 100 feet back from the Route 28 right-of-way. And then Zone B are all of those lots that do not have frontage on Route 28. So they typically are fronting on side roads that are leading up to Route 28. Go ahead to the next slide. And again, looking at graphics as a way of helping people understand the details of this draft zoning, here is an illustration of the lot standards, which really are the same as what currently exists in terms of minimum lot size, minimum lot frontage, and maximum lot coverage in this area. But if we go on to the next slide, you'll see where this proposed zoning starts to bring in some new ideas, and particularly to focus on, I think, is the road setback. So this would propose a minimum and a maximum road setback from Route 28, the minimum of 10 feet, a maximum of 20 feet, which would require that all properties have at least one building that is set close to the street between that 10- and 20-foot setback. And then also significant in the district is a parking setback. So all parking would be required to be 10 feet further back from Route 28 than the main building facade. So in this illustration, the orange area shows the sort of range of road setback in which the front of the building would need to be located for the primary building, and then the red dotted line, which is set 10 feet further back than the front of that building, shows how far back any parking would have to be located. And that's for the Zone A1. Zone A2, which is, remember, that rear portion of those lots that front on Route 28, that has primarily focuses on a parking setback, that parking has to be at least 30 feet from all road frontages. And in terms of buildings, there would be a 10-foot minimum road setback, but no maximum. And then on to Zone B, it's very similar to Zone A1 because, again, these are lots that are fronting on a roadway. There's a minimum and a maximum road setback here. It's a little bit more varied than shown along Route 28. It's a 10- to 30-foot range for a building setback, but again, it includes that parking setback 10 feet further back from the road than the front of the building is shown. Also, building form, this is a key element in the draft zoning because we're really trying to, as I said, create a pedestrian-friendly area with buildings of a particular scale and form that invite pedestrian interaction. So this lays out some of the primary building form elements, building height, total facade width. Here, we've got two areas shown in yellow, and those are there primarily because those are two areas that the Planning Board is particularly interested in hearing your comments and public comment about. Right now, the draft zoning shows a maximum of two stories, not to exceed 30 feet. However, they're considering increasing that to two and a half stories if particularly affordable housing is provided within the building. And then also looking at total facade width, they've identified a maximum total facade width of 75 feet, but there's some question as to whether that might be wider than other folks would like to see, and so that's a question for you to consider. And as part of that, we've put together a few graphics to help folks understand. These are looking at existing buildings within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center or just outside them. These are two relatively recent structures where we have the total facade width shown, the medical facility building. You can see overall, there's 125, I'm sorry, 120 feet in width, though it is broken into four separate elements that are sort of pushed and pulled at different distances from the roadway. Each of those elements ranges from, you know, 20 to sort of 45 feet in width. On the bottom is another example that's just outside of the commercial zone, and its overall facade width is 84 feet, though again, broken into some smaller elements. Though, I guess, part of the reason to show the difference between these is that one of these buildings has significant stepbacks between the different elements, and that's something that would be required in the proposed zoning. However, the overall width of both of these buildings would not be required under, and would not be allowed under the proposed zoning because they would be exceeding the 75-foot total facade width. And then there's one more illustration we can show you. This looks at two of the older buildings within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Again, looking at overall facade width, the building on the top has an overall width of 63 feet, the building on the bottom, an overall width of 48 feet. So as proposed, both of those would be consistent with the maximum facade width. If the maximum facade width were to be made any shorter than 75 feet, then, you know, that might impact whether both of these would still be consistent. All right, and on to the next example. So another key element to the building form regulations in the proposed zoning are maximum building footprint. So again, looking at building scale, in Zone A1, the maximum footprint would be 3,000 square feet, trying to identify a sort of traditionally sized building that would be right on the road frontage and in greatest contact with pedestrians. Zone A2 to the rear, that building footprint would be larger, the allowance would be larger for 5,000 square feet or up to 5,000 square feet. And again, this is shown in yellow because the Planning Board has been considering different numbers. Originally, this was a 7,000-square-foot maximum building footprint, but they've revised it to 5,000. And then for Zone B, again, fronting on the side roads, the maximum building footprint would be 4,000 square feet. And on to the next slide. And again, some illustrations just to help you sort of understand that in context. We have, the building shown on the top here has a building footprint of 6,300 square feet, and the building on the bottom, which contains a post office, has a square footage of over 9,000 square feet. And those are meant, I guess, just as sort of a gauge to help you understand scale and sort of how a building, depending on its narrowness or the way it's broken up into different components, may feel different even if it has a larger or a smaller square, total square footage. All right, and just a few more standards that are, that are sort of key elements focusing on the pedestrian relationship to these buildings. One is facade transparency, so the amount of windows and sort of glass area on the front of the facade. We've, the draft zoning proposes a minimum of 35% of facade transparency on the ground floor and a minimum of 20% on the second floor. And then also, building frontage minimum, so trying to make sure that there's enough interaction between buildings and the sidewalk and interaction between buildings and the sidewalk and not too many wide-open spaces really along the road frontage so that pedestrians have something interesting to look at and buildings to interact with. There's a proposed building frontage occupancy of 50%, so 50% of that road frontage would have to have some kind of building located within it in the setback area, and the principal entry would have to also face Route 28. And I should mention, of course, this is all for Zone A1, which is the section of the zone which is right along Route 28. And then the third component of that, along with building frontage, is lot frontage occupancy. So if 50% of that setback area has to be occupied by a building, then another 20% has to be occupied by some kind of landscaping that helps to define the street edge, such as landscaping beds, or hedges, or low fences, that sort of thing. And there are landscape standards included in the proposed zoning that focus on that area adjacent to the street, adjacent to Route 28, specifically calling for street trees, landscaping between the road and the building, and then landscaping standards between the road and any parking areas that, as we know, are set further back. Also, landscaping standards for any buffers to residential zones, and also for within parking areas of greater than 20 spaces. And the next slide. The draft zoning also includes parking requirements that are revised from what currently are required in that area, and specifically, it sets a minimum and a maximum parking requirement. And there tend to be, the maximum is really what's typically required now, and we're giving a greater flexibility in terms of how many, greater flexibility and hopefully lower parking requirements for many uses in order to try to reduce the amount of asphalt and paved areas in the district. And the next. And let's see, they're also, along with that, include waiver requests either to reduce or increase parking requirements. That's possible for specific uses that might need either more or less than in the minimum-maximum range of parking. Also encouraging shared onsite parking, bicycle parking, shared driveways, and identifying a maximum driveway access width, and also encouraging cross-accesses between adjacent properties, again, with a maximum driveway width of 24 feet. And finally, on to uses. Many of these uses are what's currently allowed within the district. I will say the planning board has identified a couple of uses where they're interested in encouraging greater flexibility in residential uses, and so there are a few new, newly-described residential uses shown here, but also the goal of having mixed use with commercial and residential development in the same structure. And if we go into the last slide here, I think the planning board is considering prohibiting some uses, particularly motel, hotel, inn, and tourist home uses within the district. They are interested in increasing the maximum density of dwelling units in the area, possibly focusing on eight dwelling units per acre, but allowing a greater density if affordable housing is included in proposal. And also, the planning board is focusing on defining a mix of, the appropriate mix of commercial and residential space, particularly in the A1 zone, which is focusing along Route 28. There, we really want to make sure that the first floor of development, which is, you know, focused on the street and any pedestrian activity, that that is commercial in use, but above and to the rear of that could be residential uses and the lot, any buildings that are further back from Route 28, there may be a lot more flexibility. But here, we're proposing that the front 30 feet of any building that's in that A1 zone, so focusing on Route 28 or oriented to Route 28, would be a commercial use, but then the rest of the area could be either residential or commercial. And next slide. Okay, so I recognize that that's a huge number of details for you to absorb, but I hope that seeing those illustrations and having that overview will help a little bit with understanding the draft zoning.
Thank you very much, Sarah and Chloe, and that was a great presentation. And to the board, I understand that we've given you quite a bit of information just now. So moving forward, I think that, you know, we'd be certainly happy to hear any initial feedback that you have today, but we do, again, we plan to be back before you next week at your meeting on November 4th. A couple of things I'd like to point out is that in the draft zoning bylaw, as you go through it, you'll see some areas that are shaded in yellow, and those are areas of particular interest to the planning board that they wanted to get comments from, from the HBDC and the ZBA, in particular, on those areas that are shaded in yellow. And so if you could pay attention particularly to those areas, and if you have feedback, it would be beneficial to be able to provide that back to the board. We did present to the HBDC and have had, received comments from them. They were generally positive. They did suggest that they didn't want us to be overly prescriptive in what their requirements are, but generally, they liked the idea of the form-based hybrid model. And so I think with that, I mean, we can, you know, certainly take any questions that you may have today, and just plan to be here back before you next week. So back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I don't know. I'll just go through everyone and see if they have any desire to have a question now or a comment now. So Buck?
I'm going to withhold any questions until I have a chance to read the material that was included here and maybe chew on that for a few days. So maybe at our next meeting, I can offer some thoughts.
Okay, Bill?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I have a number of comments, but I'd rather read the whole document first before I pose the question. But I do have one question generally about the boundaries of the zone. Why isn't, doesn't the area in consideration include more of the area on the north side of 28, you know, away from, toward town? For example, the property where the senior center was proposed for. Why did it stop at Job Lot, I guess, is my question?
Actually, I'm not sure if she's available, but I know this has been going on, this, looking at rezoning in the West Chatham area has been going on for a number of years, as you saw in the presentation. So I think Catherine Halpern is on. She is the chair of the planning board, and I think it would be helpful to have Catherine answer that question.
Thank you, Katie. This is Catherine Halpern. I just want to mention, I'm at work, so it's possible I'll get interrupted, but I just want to say the boundaries have been determined, first of all, according to the comprehensive plan, which does give some outline to the boundaries. And the comprehensive plan of the Town of Chatham also calls for the boundaries of the neighborhood centers to be determined by the residents of those neighborhood centers. So a lot of work has been done by the planning board and Cape Cod Commission to implement the comprehensive plan in this manner. And back in 2013 and 2014 in particular, a visioning study was done by Cape Cod Commission at the request of the Board of Selectmen to help the planning board envision how to amend our bylaws to implement the comprehensive plan along Route 28. And it would be quite a long story to tell you all of the research that was done, all of the community forums that were held, all of the focus groups that were done by both Cape Cod Commission and the planning board, but to pack all of that into a nutshell, the boundaries that you were shown were the boundaries that, at this point, seemed to comply with the community's wishes. So that does eliminate some of those areas. So it's two things. It's as defined by comprehensive plan and then as further defined by all the work that's been done since then, really based on community input. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, let me, I mean, I can take a longer look at this, but to be honest, I don't know if that really answers my question, but it just seems like if, you know, if we're going to look at West Chatham, you know, this area that you're not looking at, which is opposite an area on 28 that you are looking at, is one of the, you know, the few spots that doesn't already have development on it, you know? I mean, it's a spot that you can actually maybe do some, do some planning or do some analysis of zoning and see what you might want to put in there. That was my first impression, but anyway, that's my reaction to that, I guess.
Okay. If I could give a brief reply without going into too much of the details, I believe some of the lots that you are mentioning are privately-owned residential lots, and it's our understanding that the owners, you know, wish to keep them as they are. So there may not be the opportunity for redevelopment in those particular areas that you're thinking of. That's my understanding at the moment, but I think, you know, maybe Community Development Department will look into the details more thoroughly, will help us look into that and answer your question more thoroughly next week.
Okay, that's really all I had right now. Thanks, Dave.
Paul?
Okay, thank you.
I think I also would like to take a look at the actual suggestions that you provided in writing and then give you my comments, so I'll wait until the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I think I'm going to do the same as Paul. I think I'm going to wait till November 4th.
Randy?
Same here. I will wait. Thank you.
David?
Yes, I want to look over the material. The one thing that's going through my mind in all of this or where the dust settles is how it may, how ultimately, or even the process of making decisions about which way to go with some of these things, how that might impact the pre-existing non-conforming structures and properties, because those are the things that we may be having to deal with, and how that interfaces with this all.
Okay. All right. All right, well, I want to thank you ladies very much. It is a lot to chew on, and we'll continue this next week. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I think we'll take a five-minute break, if that's okay with you. Gentlemen, I think we'll take a five-minute break, if that's okay with you.
Okay, folks, we're back to business. Buck, we're back to business. Thank you.
We're back in business. I'll remember one of these days. So we have two continuances, we'll do that first. Sir, would you please read 20-081?
Application number 20-081, Katama Point LLC, care of Joe Giacalone, One Presidential Way, Suite 109, Woburn, Mass. 101801. Owner of property located at 68 Shell Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's map, 14K Block 7 Lot W50. The applicant seeks to enlarge extent or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the relocation of a portion of the existing dwelling and conversion into guest quarters, relocation of a portion of the barn, and the construction of a new dwelling and swimming pool. Also proposed is the construction of a new driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and it is located entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 11. The proposed dwelling, guest quarters, and barn will be non-conforming in that they will be located within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,697 square feet, 43.7%, and the proposed building coverage is 5,791 square feet, 68.5%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 8,455 square feet of contiguous buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required for a single dwelling. The lot contains 120, 120, 100 square feet in an R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B, 8D, 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from December 17, 2020, January 28, March 11, April 22, June 24, 2021.
And August.
Oh, did we miss August?
August 12th, I think.
August 12th as well, yes.
Okay, we received the following note. This is from Joe Giacalone. He writes on Thursday, October 28. "We would like to ask for a continuance on our ZBA meeting today to November 18. Since our last meeting, we hired a new architect and have done a complete redesign to meet the concerns of the board. We feel confident that the new design will be well received by the board. However, coordinating the new architect with Clark Engineering and editing architectural as well as site plans has taken longer than expected." Any comments from any members of the board?
I'll move to grant the continuance to November 18, 2021.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, that would take a roll call. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave V.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And Dave Me, I vote yes, too. Okay. Okay, Sarah, on to 21-070.
Application number 21-070, George E. Foot Trust, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 85 Cockle Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's map, 5D Block 1, Lot SMI15. The applicant seeks to enlarge extent or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and it is located partially within the floodplain elevation 11 and within the 50-foot setback to the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located within the 50-foot setback to the Coastal Conservancy District. The existing building coverage is 1,099 square feet, 16.1%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,481 square feet, 21.7%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 6,838 square feet of buildable upland and 11,729 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from September 23, 2021 for re-advertising.
Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the applicant, George Foot, as trustee, respectfully request that this matter be continued till November 18, a date which I have confirmed with Sarah. I've also signed the appropriate waiver of time limitations, so we'd appreciate your indulgence in that regard.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
I'll move to grant the continuance to November 18, 2021.
Dave Veach seconds.
This takes a roll call vote. Buck?
James Upson votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave V. Dave Veach votes yes.
And Dave Me, I vote yes, too. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
Application number 21-080, Richard and Juliana Quinn, care of Richard Roy, 123A, Queen Anne Road, Harwich, Mass. 02645. Owner of property located at 15 Cove Hill Circle, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's map, 13J Block 1, Lot G9. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance under Section 8D 2C from the requirements of Appendix 2 to allow for a dwelling that exceeds the maximum allowable building height. The height as constructed is 30.5 feet where 30 feet from grade plane is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 32,606 square feet in an R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 8D 2C of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Roy.
Good afternoon. It is stated by Sarah, I'm representing Richard and Julie Quinn, but more importantly, I guess I'm representing Rick Roy Construction because this is more something that's on on me than it is on the Quinns. I thought that it would be important to kind of give a brief paraphrase of how we got to the place that we're at right now. As you know, I've been a fairly successful builder and have built many structures in the Town of Chatham, so I don't feel very good that I'm actually here asking for a dimensional variance because I know better. But how it came about was that we were up at the site and we were getting ready to start to pour the pool, so we were checking all the elevations. And Sarah, if you wanted to put up the site plan, that would be great. And in doing so, I was starting to check the numbers and saw that the elevation for the height of the building was at, I think it's 53.7, and noticed that the height calculation was 53.8. So I immediately took a big gulp and I asked the framer to go up and measure from the second floor deck to the ridge line and then became somewhat sick after that. So I got in touch with Dave Clark and I had Dave Clark come down because I knew that this had to be figured out and rectified. I wasn't gonna wait until I was doing the elevation certificate and find out that we were trying to get an occupancy permit for the clients and we had an issue with the height, so Dave Clark came down and they took all the sites, shots around the site and everything and came up with the fact that we were over by six inches on a certain section of the roof. So I now have the task of explaining to the board, you know, that we meet the qualifications of variance and we don't deteriorate the intent of the bylaw. So as you can see from this site plan, we kind of qualify for all of the categories that you have to come up against a variance. If you notice on on the plan, the dash lines coming from multiple directions, the soil situation here is that we're right on top of conservation from two directions. So when a person buys a piece of property like this, you know, the only thing that they have in their corner is the fact that they are working off of the footprint of the existing structure. In this case, it happened to be Jack Sludger's old house. And it, in the in the course of going through conservation and meeting their criteria, the house was placed in this location, and it was due to the fact that we had to to meet all of the the criteria based upon the soil. The next thing is, is that the lot shape, as you can see, and I think you can pull up that other picture that comes from the Town's Assessors, that's the shape of the lot. And the reason the house, the existing house, was tucked over in that corner like that was because obviously you can't see the topography on there, but the coastal bank is right at the top and all that area that goes down below towards the water is is really very steep banking. So in acclimating the house on the property, not only was was it dictated by the soil, you know, based upon conservation, and then the shape of the lot came into play as well. And then third, and you go back to the site plan, Sarah. Third and most importantly, okay, the the plateau, the flat area of the lot, okay, was really right at the the top of the hill, but unfortunately, in order to be able to come to a compromise with the Conservation Commission, we had to pull the house back away so that we could give them an improvement to help with the, you know, preserving the habitat and so on and so forth. But in doing so, the house was pulled back and consequently that increased the steepness of the grade, so it precipitated even some of the walls that you see that are on the plan now, okay? Now, Sarah, if we can go to the plan that has the circle for where the retaining wall would go, right there. So that foundation plan that you see right there, okay, you see all the different colors on it. In order to be able to help with the height of the building, okay, I actually recessed all the framing within the foundation so that I was actually getting rid of the foot of the height of the building. So I was aware of the fact that we were, you know, trying to make everything work. The only problem is, is that when I started to discover that we were over, I went back to the plans, and Karen can allude to this. Even though Karen said to the engineers that the building was 53.7, it really didn't end up being 53.7. The building was actually drawn too tall. And so unfortunately, during the course of COVID and having skeleton crews working on the job and, you know, not being able to get access to the engineers, because typically, and I have to just be honest, because one of the things is, is that I know how to build, and this hasn't been the first time that I've been up against the height requirement and knowing that I was going to be close, but unfortunately during COVID, this kind of slipped away from my project managers and myself, because I normally would have had Dave Clark come out to the site. I would have had him shoot the second floor deck, and I would have had, we would have adjusted the pitch of the roof, because if you've got a 12 pitch on the roof and the building's 24 feet wide, you take a half an inch out of the pitch, you gain six inches. If I had done that at the time, I wouldn't be here talking to you now. Unfortunately, that didn't get done. And then by the time the client requests seat or breather and everything else, the the height grows a little bit. So we were a little bit behind the eight ball before we started, but the problem is, is that the hardship that it causes, besides all the topography and soil, is that, first of all, in order to get, and I can tell you that I have an out, okay? So that that area that you see there on the screen that's all shaded in in black. So I I had Wendy figure out, okay, what could I do to adjust the grades? Can I do anything to adjust the grades? And I can. I can add over 70 feet of retaining wall and fill 700 and whatever it says there, 768 square feet of fill, but in doing so, and Sarah, if you can go to the elevations, that one right there, that yellow line represents, okay, where that retaining wall and how tall that retaining wall would have to be. In order to be able to get the grade to a point that when they did the calculations for the height, okay, it would make that little tiny area that's on the top of the screen that's shaded in red or purple, okay, which is about 31 feet of ridge, which represents, if you go to slide the slide down a little bit, Sarah, so you can see the T that's on the top of the page, that T represents the area of the roof that's above the height calculation, it's about 50 square feet. So in turn, now if you slide this picture down, sorry, Sarah, I wish, that retaining wall, okay, if it's installed, would then cover over all of the windows, okay, that are in the basement. Now, I can put window wells, but it really eliminates the, what the intent of the window was, is for view and and to get light into the into the the finished basement that's down there. Now, I had members of the Zoning Board of Appeals over there on Monday so that they could at least walk through the property so that they could see what was taking place there, but the hardship here is, is that this is not the client's intent. They're not gonna have to pay for the wall. I'm the one that made the mistake, so I'm really paying for the wall, but it certainly adds a tremendous bulk of area within conservation's jurisdiction. So let's talk about the hardship of conservation, okay? We started this project, okay, in November of 2019. That's when we got the team together, Karen, Andrew Garrelay, you know, Bill Riley was the attorney, and we started to figure out how we were gonna approach conservation. It took us a year to get this project approved by the by the Conservation Commission. Sarah, if you go back to the site plan, okay, not only did not moving the house back satisfy the zone, the Conservation Commission, but if you notice that hatched area up in the corner, we had to literally put that chunk of land, okay, into a conservation trust so that we couldn't touch any of it. So I know to go back to conservation to get permission to get this retaining wall put in, to put the fill in it, is going to be short of a miracle, okay, because this is all the stuff that we had to do in order to be able to get the project approved in the first place, okay? And God only knows how many tens of thousands of dollars it took to redesign and and redo the site plans in order to be able to get Conservation to approve the project. And then you get into the the idea, well, if you if you're not doing that, well, can you change the roof line? Well, you go to the elevation again on the on the site plan and then bring up the two pictures that I took. All of these roof pitches, okay, on all of these these gable ends, okay, are the same, which is the way you build a house. So in order to be able to reduce the middle section of the house, you'd have to change the pitch, so that would be the only gable end that wouldn't match all the rest of it. But additionally, now if you go to the pictures of the framing, okay? The upper picture is is the main, where the where the ridges all intersect in that 31-foot section of the building, okay? And as the way we have to build today, okay, with all of the engineering and everything else, okay, those are all structural ridges. You can see where that structural ridge, okay, there's a triple 16-inch LBL that runs from left to right, then you've got the live alley rafters and the and the main ridge coming into that. That's posted down to that beam that you see that's right here.
Oh, Brett, you can't walk with a microphone.
I'm not talking. All right, listen. And then, okay, what happens is, is that that's all posted all the way down into the basement. So if you said, I'm just gonna cut six inches out of the top of the roof, it can't be done. You'd have to basically tear the entire roof off and put the roof back on again. So and that would probably, and at this point, because we didn't catch it until this point, you know, the the building's all shingled, it's all trimmed, you know, you're looking at $200,000 or $300,000 to, you know, to change that roof. So basically what ends up happening, if you go back to what you could do to put the grade in and everything else like that, you're talking about spending in the neighborhood of about $70,000 and then whatever it takes in time, okay, to get through conservation, if you get through conservation, to basically get it so that that six inches of ridge, that 50 square feet of ridge, all right, meets the bylaw mathematically. And I think that this is a, this is a good use of the variance. It wasn't done intentionally. It certainly wasn't done by the Quinns to get something more than what they already have, okay, because if I had done the job correctly, the building would have basically looked the same, it just would have met the height calculation. So I'm here asking for a variance.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today or in the audience, and that would include out there in Microsoft Teams world, who wishes to speak in favor of this variance? If you do, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
Then I will read the correspondence. First, this is an email. It's from Donald and Sally Gould. They write on October 27. "We are writing to voice our approval of the Quinn's application for a dimensional variance. We are property owners at Cove Hill Circle. We are also the former owners of 15 Cove Hill Circle, with a family history on this property that goes back more than 65 years. We strongly urge you to grant this variance." And then we have a letter. This is from Dawn Freeman and Phyllis Freeman. They live at 103 Roland Drive. They write on October 25. "We have received notice of our requested variance, a location that is right across Frostfish Creek from our property. We understand the difficulty of obtaining a variance, but in this case, it would appear that an honest mistake has been made because of the topography. A lot of knowledgeable..." A lot of knowledgeable people were involved in the beginning, and the error should have been caught earlier. However, we believe this was an inadvertent mistake, and if the requested relief is granted, it would not represent a precedent, and there would be no negative impact on our property. We recommend the requested relief be granted." Then we have an email. This is dated Tuesday, October 19th. It is from Wendy and Tim Sullivan. Their address is 10 Cove Hill Circle. "My name is Wendy Sullivan, husband Timothy, we live at 10, and our director butters to 15 Cove Hill Circle, named in the application. We are just letting you know that we have no objection to this application and give our support to the builder and owners, Richard Roy, Richard Quinn, and Juliana Quinn." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. We'll start to my left, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I have no questions from Rick.
Randy.
I have no questions.
Dave Veach.
Yeah, Rick, I just want to check. So you, under, under less trying circumstances, or normally, what you, what I understood you say was, when the second floor deck is finished, then you'll have the engineer come out and shoot the height of that so that you can then make adjustment to make sure you're below the height? So you normally do that, but in this case, for whatever circumstances, that, that didn't happen, correct?
Let's just say that employee is still employed by the grace of God.
That's, that's good. Yeah, I'd say, because, you know, I've thought about this some, and just to add a little kind of, you know, that's, that's the time that you can make a change. And once, once the rafters are cut and put up, trying to change anything is, is, gets very expensive. So it's working. Once, when you know for that second floor deck level, that's the way to, place to work from. That's all I had, Dave. Thanks.
Buck.
So, Rick, the drawing that you have on the easel on the top there that's stamped and read a draft that shows the retaining wall and a whole bunch of elevations, I'm, I'm wondering, what was going through your mind when you decided to have Dave draw that up and share it with us?
Well, because I wanted to be honest. I didn't want to come before the board and ask for a variance without being able to say that I had an out. I'm a very honest guy, okay? And I felt that it was only fair to explain to the commission that, you know, if, if you didn't grant the variance, then I would be forced to spend this money and put this in, much to the despair of the clients, because they don't really want that there. But I could do it. All right? And, and I don't think it would have been fair if I didn't say that to the commission. And, you know, it's, I mean, it's a very complicated site. You can tell by the number of shots that they have to take to even come up with the height calculation. But, you know, I'm not stuck if you don't grant the variance. I'm just a lot poorer and a lot farther behind schedule, so I can't say anything more than that.
Thank you. Bill.
I don't have any other questions.
Paul.
I don't have any other questions. We did have an opportunity to go back out to the site on Monday and take a look at it, and that was very educational. So I don't think I have any further questions.
Okay. And I don't, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, roll call on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Deliberations. Randy, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you. When you say you have an out, sir, oh yeah, when you say you have an out, you, did you check with the building inspector to see if you will actually get your certificate if you were able to go through the conservation and do that buildup in that area?
I know that I would be able to get, because basically it's the engineers telling the building inspector that the building is compliant. So by having the engineers figure the calculations out for me, okay, they're making the, they know what the elevation of the ridge is now, and they know what they need to have for numbers in order to be able to get the grade. The first suggestion by the building inspector when I made him aware of the situation was, is there any way you can get the grade to work? Well, that's the way I can get the grade to work.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
And Randy, if you have any questions, our building commissioner is right there.
No, I take your word for it.
Okay.
Take your word for it, so, yep, great.
Dave Veach.
We're in deliberations.
Yes, we are.
Okay, good. Well, I, at, at first, when I saw that the, that there wasn't out, I thought, well, that's, that's good to know in many respects. But in, in assessing the entire situation and how it came about and whether, short version is, I can easily find this, this meets the criteria for a variance. It meets all the criteria in my judgment. And I don't see any benefit to the town or anyone here to put them in a position of needing to do grade changes that aren't necessary for any purpose other than this one. So I will support this.
Buck.
So I appreciate the dilemma you're in, and I think you did an excellent presentation. The second criteria for a variance, these aren't my rules, these are the town rules, is financial hardship. And when it's self-imposed, I've heard a number of times, members of this board say that financial hardship is hard to claim when it was a self-imposed deviation. So I'm, I'm having a hard time supporting it.
Well, Buck, the only thing I can say to that is, is that I'm sure that there are people who have come before this board who have self-imposed things, knowing that they were doing it to themselves, okay? This was purely accidental, because if I had, if I had my choice, I would have much rather not been before you asking for the variance. I would have much rather have made the adjustment and gotten my occupancy permit.
Bill.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also struggling, or would be, if I were voting with meeting all three criteria of the, you know, required of the variance. I know we talked on the site about the topography of the lot, and I think Buck brought up the point about substantial financial hardship. I, I just think, putting all that aside, that penalizing the builder, the owner who doesn't want the wall there either, for the sake of six inches in this case, is, is not something that we, we should be doing. I'm concerned with the precedent it sets, and, and I sort of wanted to get Paul's, kind of, what Paul's thoughts are about that. You know, and I, so I guess what I'm saying is, if I were voting, I, I would most likely support this, but I do have some concerns about that precedent issue.
Can I interject? Is that possible?
Yep.
So basically, I looked at all of this because I, I know that you all are smart people, and some are attorneys, and so on and so forth. I, I think that the key here is, is that, does it deteriorate the intent of the bylaw? Okay? I mean, I'm not egregiously over on the height of this, okay? I'm six inches, all right? I'm not six inches over the entire ridge, okay? I'm only six inches over 31 feet of the ridge. So I know that there are other cases that have come before the Zoning Board of Appeals where they've been over by a lot more than six inches and a lot more than the, the length of the ridge and everything. So I'm not exactly sure that I'm deteriorating the intent of the bylaw, or am I setting precedent? Because it's been done before.
Paul.
Well, I think we've, we've heard in the past from a number of attorneys who have appeared before us that we're not setting precedent in making a particular decision with respect to a particular case. So I think that that's a concern that perhaps we should not be dealing with on this issue. I think what we should be concerned about in dealing with is the fact that we have an experienced builder and experienced architect who have put up a number of structures in our town that are admirable. And when we look at this structure and visited the site, you can see how difficult the terrain is to work with, and you can see that a lot has been done to deal with that. Yes, it may be possible to revise the lot, assuming that you could receive permission, but revising the lot would create a real disasterless look, I think, for the lot and the neighborhood, when the neighborhood supports what's existing there now. So I think when we're dealing with 31 feet of ridge or 50 square feet, and it is not affecting the view from the water side, it's, it's difficult to say that it makes any sense at all to not grant this variance. So I would be voting in favor of the variance.
Dave Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I can see that all of the standards here have been met, as far as I'm concerned. I've known Rick Roy for many, many, many years. He's a very honest man. This is human error, and Rick has come forward regarding this, and I'm very sorry for him. I am very much in favor of granting this variance to Rick.
Thank you. Okay, well, you know, sometimes we forget who brought the application. Rick Roy did not bring it. Karen Kempton did not bring it. This application was submitted to us by the Quinns. And we need to think of that when we go through these various criteria. The Quinns have suffered a lot of hardship. They've been at this three years. And as Rick pointed out, if they have to go back to conservation, let's say it's another six months, well, that's another year they can't use their dream home. That's another year they can't be here with their family. No one can ever replace time. No matter what we do, we can't give them time. But we can stop it from being worse. Rick has thrown himself on the stake. He doesn't need to. You know, if, I got to tell you something, if I was redesigning my house and rebuilding it tomorrow, I would hire Karen Kempton in a nanosecond to design it, and in the same nanosecond, I would hire Rick Roy to do it. This is a simple error that was made. It was compounded. Let's go back to the hardship for the Quinns. They can't get a building, they can't get an occupancy permit. Jay's not going to give it to them. Sarah's not going to give it to them. So what are they going to do? The idea of filling that 700 or whatever it is with an eight-foot high, right, and to block out those windows, that's a terrible idea. It's just a terrible idea. It ruins the aesthetic. And Karen, I don't know how many iterations you must have gone through to design that house. It must have been 20 if it was one. I mean, I, I just can't imagine to fit it in there. What, what the Quinns are asking us for is another option. That doesn't, let's suppose we grant it. That doesn't mean that next week, they're not going to say, you know what, Rick? We want you to fix the roof. Well, that's their decision. That's not ours. It's got nothing to do with us. But we can give them an option. Their other option might be, and we all know people who, projects go down the wrong street, wrong track, and what happens? They get tired of it. Well, let's just sell it. Let's go buy a house. There's a house up by Eastwood Hall we could buy tomorrow. Let's go buy that. We'll, let's put this on the market, and we'll take a haircut and the heck with it. They could do that. I don't know. But I don't want them to have to do that. I want them to have this option. So focusing on who brought the request for the variance is very important. It isn't that Rick and Karen, their name isn't on this. This isn't a spec house they're building, so they can sell it for six and a half million bucks when it's done. That isn't the situation. It's the Quinns. We should approve this variance with no hesitation. The number of unfortunate things that have happened to the Quinns because of this, we can rectify to a small degree. We can't give them the time, as I mentioned. We can't replace that. But we can stop it. We can get Rick back to work on the house in three weeks, so he can get it done. Will it be done next summer? I doubt it, but at, at least it won't go on for another summer. Any other comments? Motion, Paul.
I'll move to grant the application as submitted.
Dave Veach, seconds.
We need a roll call on this. How do you vote? Buck?
Proudly in support.
I'll vote yes.
I also will vote yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And obviously, I'm going to vote yes. I believe that's a unanimous vote. Thank you both for everything you've done over the years for this town and will continue to do, and I'm sorry you lost sleep and time and money.
I can guarantee you, I won't be back for a variance for height.
Okay, I think we only have a matter of adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, well, I'll vote on this. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes.
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Randy?
Randy votes yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
Thank you, one and all. Thank you, guys.